According to the agenda, we have public comment period before the roll call. Is that correct?
It's silent.
Can we call a roll first?
Yes.
Please call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Victoria.
Okay, and now we'll go back to the public comment period. Would anybody like to make any comments? If you would, if you could please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay, I'm holding a statement now, trying to... Yep. My name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. Yep, Ward Four. And I would like to thank my friend and councilman Terry Siemens for getting elected again. As we said, Ward Four is the only ward where the vote is two for the price of one. Joyce Siemens and Terry Siemens. And we also, I'm proud to say, I also helped Joyce seem for very wonderful birthday. Her husband getting elected into the city council once again. And that's what he wanted to do. So he continued serving his city very well. As you can see on my picture, serving the city, yeah? Serving the people. Yep. And I attended the peace signing tonight because Terry Siemens is a man of peace. And he's helped me out many a times. He's also... Without him, I don't know if I'd even be alive today. Like I said, he has done a lot for me over the years. And he continues to do for me over the years. And I continue to carry this peace symbol in anything where peace needs to be declared. Like last weekend, we protested the death penalty. I went down to Jared, Virginia, to protest the death penalty. Even though the man was a sniper, he is still a human being. And it's up to God to decide who is to live and who is to die. The commandments say that I shall not kill. And we've got to remember that. And we also got to remember violence only begets more violence, and peace begets more peace. As Terry Siemens has shown us, working peacefully and nonviolently in our city has really shown us the way. You know, whether we know him, or whether we know all of his services, or whether we don't know him, everybody in this city has, one way or another, benefited from Joyce Siemens and Terry Siemens as they continue working for peace. Let us continue to see Terry Siemens working for peace for the next two years in Tacoma Park, Maryland, as we continue to lead the country in many ways, many ways, many more ways than can be counted. And remember, we got two for the price of one this time. And whatever the economy gets bad, we better remember that. Thank you very much for letting me share. Terry, thank you very much for running, and thank you very much for accepting my vote. Okay? Remember, everybody out there, remember, voting is important. You've got to get out there. If you're not registered now, it's never too late to register to vote now for the next year, and the next years, and many years ahead. Get out there and vote, and register to vote, and then get out there and do it. You'll be just as happy as I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make any comments? And if I can point out for people standing in the room, I see at least three empty chairs over here, so if somebody wants a seat, there are still chairs. Next item on the agenda is adoption of minutes. We have minutes before us from July 27th and September 8th. Would somebody like to move adoption?
Move.
Okay, been moved and seconded. And if I can just point out one little thing that two council members will need to figure out on these. On the September 8th minutes, I noticed in the vote for the closed session, councilmember Clay voted both for and absent, and councilmember Wright isn't accounted for. So if you all can figure it out and let the clerk know, or just pick one, then we...
I have notes left, I'm going to get to...
Okay. So we'll just, we'll let that be decided afterward, but we will vote to adopt the minutes as they're going to be fixed on that one little bit. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, they carry unanimously. Now, there's an opportunity for the existing council to make any remarks. There's also a chance later in the meeting for the new council to make remarks. So for those who fit in both categories, take your pick. For those who don't, you might want to go now. So, councilmember Victoria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was going to write some remarks, but I haven't gotten around to that. I've been on the council for four months, and, you know, for several years before that, I had gotten kind of tired of the local arguments and had not... Had decided to increase my sanity by paying less attention. But I came to do this because it was short term. I realized I'm actually getting commended tonight for leaving. I know that the sixteenth, so that's a valid comment. But I guess what I want people to know is that after spending four months, spending a lot more time with these folks and with the people in this building, that I actually feel a lot better about how this city is run than when I started four months ago. And that's saying something. I mean, most of these people have other jobs and other things in their lives and are doing this part-time. And then the people who work full-time, the staff here, work incredibly hard, and I think all come with good intent. We had, we were gratified... I was gratified personally by the candidates, while we didn't have a huge number. We had nice, sincere conversations about what the direction of the city is. We all know that there's some financial constraints now, but I feel confident in the people who are going to make those decisions for me. And if I don't, I'll come here and shake my fist at them and let them know that I think that Tacoma Park, I believe in, would do X, Y, or Z. But I did want to say that I really have grown to appreciate the people who work in this building. I will look forward to working with them again. And I want to thank everybody who had infinite patience for explaining everything to me. I'm sure they will take plenty of time to explain it all again to Fred now. And lastly, to say that if there's something that you don't like, please volunteer. I've been asked to serve now on at least six committees, and that's what happens when you stick your head out of your hole in Tacoma Park. But really, I see a lot of needs, and we have a task force on the environment. There are so many people here who are committed to environmental issues, and not a lot of funds for innovative new programs. And I'd like people to consider individually what you can do, whether it's... I'm going to adopt one of the traffic circles in my neighborhood and help the gardening department, because I don't think we're going to get more staff working on these things. And another topic that I will discuss with my council member is the fact that I think they'll be revisiting the budget for the Public Works Building. I would like to see that program go through, but if you look at things to cut costs, one of the things people might talk about cutting is the geothermal. That's an add-on. It costs, I think, $330,000 was what we saw. And I would hate to see that happen. It's penny wise and pound foolish. It is a cost now. And are there ways that we can fundraise, or that we can come together to make up some of the money for these things that truly would make a significant environmental statement for our city and still let the city balance the budget? So, thanks. I'll see you guys later, and that's it.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And Donna, I'd just like to say goodbye, but kind of with some sadness. I have really enjoyed having you on the council for this short period of time. I think you have embodied everything that I like to see in council members. Very engaged in your community, active, willing to step forward and state your opinion, and also a good sense of humor. And I find all those things to be really enjoyable, and I've been enjoying working with you for this short time. I had a couple other things I wanted to mention tonight that are kind of time constrained, so it's really business, other than just switching over. I wanted to make sure that all the people at home know that those of us here are probably going swimming after the council meeting. We're going to have a little reception, and then we're going to the swimming pool. And so I encourage all the viewers at home to come down to the Piney Branch Pool right next door to the community center for a free swim after the council meeting. Also wanted to mention that, ask my colleagues on the council, let them know that the Crossroads Farmers Market is requesting the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to accept WIC coupons, the WIC vouchers. Some of the farmers' markets around the country, or some of the states around the country, allow WIC coupons to be used at farmers' markets. Maryland does not. And so I'm going to be sending a draft through email to my colleagues, and hope that you will support that, that needs to get into the state right away. And I also wanted to mention that Adventist Community Services, I will disclose that I do volunteer at Adventist Community Services, is committed to the Montgomery County that we will serve food packages to low-income residents who are registered for Thanksgiving. They're registered through... They have been registered, and registration is closed now. They've been registered through the Department of Health and Human Services, Housing Opportunities Commission, and local school guidance counselors. So Adventist Community Services is going to be giving food packages to all the residents who are registered, who live within 20912 zip code, which is Tacoma Park, as you all know. And the reason I mention this is Steve Francis has given a generous donation to help us this year. He doubled his donation over last year. But we have, if you can imagine it, 600 families who are registered for food, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to supply turkeys to all those families. And so anyone who's interested in supporting this would be helpful if you could give a check to the Adventist Community Services at 501 Sligo Avenue. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention an ongoing city issue, and that is tree plantings within the right-of-ways. And I would just ask the city manager that we rethink how we outreach to the neighborhoods where these activities are going to be taking place, so that community members can participate in the decisions about the trees along the city roads. And one specific question I had regarding that was, I see that in some neighborhoods, the arborist is suggesting that we plant sweetgum trees, and I believe those grow to an excessive size, and they're recommended not to be near curbing and pavement, within like eight feet of curbing or pavement. And so it's... I'm not sure that between the curb and the sidewalk is a good place for sweetgum, but I certainly defer to the arborist's judgment on that. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up with some councilmember information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. Oh, look, my children are excited. That's a good sign that they're excited, because having been a council member for four years, it's a lot of time away from your family, so I'm glad they're still happy for me, and still coming down to see the inauguration. I want to thank councilmember Victoria. I am going back to being the only woman on the council and the only one with school-age children in our public schools. So I'm sorry that you're leaving for that reason.
The TIA needs me.
There you go. But I appreciate all of the energy that you gave during the four months that you were here. Thank you very much for stepping up to do this. And I want to thank my family, who have come to support me again. Being a council member takes you away from your family, and usually about two nights a week, sometimes three nights a week. In budget season, it can be four nights a week. So it's good to continue to get support from them. I want to thank all of the people in the ward who have supported me and continue to support me. I want to thank the people who argue and challenge me on different things to get me to think about different topics. And I appreciate all of those people and hope to continue to work with them all and be able to listen to folks and bring people together around the issues as we move forward. We're going to have somewhat, I think, of a challenging couple of years as we face budget challenges at the national level, which then float down to the state and the county and to Tacoma Park. And I think it's going to be really important that we listen to each other and be considerate as we engage in what I think is going to be a pretty tough dialogue, and recognize that people will have different ideas about things, and that's okay. But we need to talk about it and find the best course of action forward for everybody. And I'm going to thank all of you for coming tonight.
And if I could just point out to people who are still standing, that I think there are still at least three chairs over here. If anybody wants a seat, there are three empty chairs. Councilmember Robinson.
I also want to thank you, councilmember Victoria. Seem to be not councilmember Victoria. You allowed me to move over one seat. That was very gratifying. I used to be on the end, but now I'm one end. But that's not the only reason. It's been a pleasure to sit next to you. I agree with Terry. Your sense of humor's been a light and uplifting force. I also want to thank my other council members, council colleagues, for putting up with me for the last couple of years. You'd get me for another couple of years. I'm very grateful for that. And I'm grateful to everyone in my ward for casting a vote in my direction. I appreciate everybody in my ward for a number of reasons. One is that they step forward and volunteer. We had a great turnout of volunteers for a number of committees. It's an engaged ward. People think about things and scrap, but end up coming to conclusions that are good for us all. So I very much appreciate all the energy and power in my ward. I appreciate the staff as well. You're great to work with. And I think I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, councilmember...
Ditto. How about that?
Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember Victoria, I also want to thank you for your service. We're kind of on opposite ends of the dais. But I... Similar to my feelings towards Doug Berry, I think you did an amazing job stepping in and replacing him, and were a cool and rational voice on the other end of the council, other end of the dais. I also want to thank all the residents in my ward who came out and voted, the 400-plus of you who voted for me and for the mayoral candidates, and also taking the time to talk with me when I knocked on your door and offer your ideas and suggestions, and to the many of you who opted to post yard signs for me in shows of support. I appreciate that a great deal. I want to thank my campaign manager, Greg LaBelle, and also an often advisor, Howard Kohn, and my treasurer, Jim Coon. Particularly, I want to thank some residents who really reached out and helped around flyering and engagement with other residents that show Gross Glazer, Wayne Sherwood, Kate Ruddy, and Pam Larson. Definitely want to thank my wife, Eliza, who had many days on Saturdays and Sundays where she was watching the kids on her own and sacrifice. So I could go knock on all those doors and sacrifices all the time for me to spend these evenings with you and other evenings with residents. And then lastly, I want to thank my kids, Aviva and Isaac. You know, Isaac's two and a half, and it's very interesting to try to explain to a two-and-a-half-year-old why you're going to go knock on doors and talk to people instead of play with him and his trains. So that's always amusing, so I appreciate it and thank them. I'm excited about working with my council colleagues. Our work starts anew with, I think, even more challenging conditions than we had in the past economically, financially. But I think we need to stay focused on what we outlined in the strategic plan around sustainability, both financially and in the environment, livability, which includes safety and walkability, and continue to improve the responsiveness of the local city government. And I look forward to working with my council colleagues over the next two years to, even with the constrained budgets, as much as possible, make Tacoma Park more of what we all want it to be. And I know at times we may disagree or have differences of opinions about how we want to get to that end goal and that end greatness for Tacoma Park, but I know that through healthy debate, we'll come up with a better solution to address our issues and problems. So, thank you.
Okay. I will save my remarks for the second half of the meeting. The one thing that I do want to say now is to remind folks that the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Performing Arts Center, which is the new building on Montgomery College campus at 410 and Georgia Avenue, the address is 7995 Georgia Avenue, is having a community open house this Wednesday, November 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And they're going to have some performances, and so this is a chance, if you want to get to see that new building, that's Wednesday, the 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So people might want to take advantage of that to see that great new building. That's another thing in our community that will be available for any number of opportunities to attend some great performances. At this point, I think we can move to the administration of the oath or affirmation of office. And the clerk of the circuit court, Loretta Knight, is here, and she will administer the oath to me, and then I will administer it to the council members. So I think we're going to do that up here.
Mayor, will you swear or affirm? If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bruce R. Williams...
I, Bruce R. Williams.
Do affirm...
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment...
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of mayor...
Execute the office of mayor.
According to the Constitution and laws...
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of the state and the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
Of the state and the laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're signing your official book that will be kept in the archives forever. You have to sign it here. You sign right here. And you have another one to sign as well. You're signing your life.
It's a pretty hefty book.
It is. This is yours.
Okay.
And I'll take this, and I'll move it out of your way so you can continue on. Congratulations again.
Thank you. So if the new council members will come forward, and Fred, if you'd come up here, and then... I guess I'll move down here, and if everybody wants to, just line up here.
Go sit down.
And when we get to the very beginning, where you swear or affirm, you pick which one you want and say it. Don't do both. And so just beginning, just your name, and followed by swear or affirm, and then it should be simple from there. So if you'll all raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, to swear or affirm... To affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland...
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof...
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of councilmember...
Execute the office of councilmember.
And say your ward number.
Ward thirty.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state...
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
And laws of the city of Tacoma Park.
And then, you each have two copies here to sign. Josh, that's yours. There are pens here. Figure out who's who. It looks like they go by ward number across. So... Was there some other...
Unfortunately, this is my address, because otherwise the whole crowd gets disrupted.
So we're doing a picture of the old council and then the new.
I guess a record clock.
Picture time, picture time, everybody. Picture time.
I notice Fred has a much bigger signature. Make sure you have a little more.
I know.
You and Donna are color-coded.
And Ruben.
We just need like three and three.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to punch you out of your spot.
Do we need to squeeze in?
All right. That's good.
Turn sideways and squeeze in. So, we're doing a picture of the old council and then the new.
Picture time, picture time, everybody. I notice Fred has a much bigger sign.
So, we're doing a picture of the old council and then the new. Picture time, picture time, everybody.
I noticed Fred has a much bigger sign.
We're going...
You and Donna are color coded.
And Ruben. We just need like three and three. Okay?
I wouldn't want to put you out of your spot.
Do we need to squeeze in?
All right.
Turn sideways and squeeze in a little? Yes. This is my best sign. Okay, now, make one substitution. We need some money, honey.
Come on, Terry. Nice knowing you.
Because it's a new council.
I don't want to be next to the new guys so that the planners could sit together.
Yeah. The first order of business is going to be the roll call, and the clerk isn't here.
I'll pinch it, it may be out of order.
Sure, why not? If the substitute clerk could call the roll.
Sure. Councilmember Robinson?
President.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
President.
Councilmember Snipper?
Here.
Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And the next thing is the appointment of the mayor pro tem, and that's a mayoral proclamation, and I won't read it, I'll just say that Councilmember Snipper will continue as mayor pro tem for the next term. And then, who would like to make remarks now? Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I first would like to thank all the voters of Ward 4 for coming out and voting this year. I appreciate the support that they showed to me, and I especially appreciate the support of my wife, Joyce, and my campaign manager, Dababu Wasefa, and my hardest campaign worker, Norman Ridgeway. He's not only a hard campaign worker, but he's a hard worker in everything else that we do in Ward 4. But I also like to thank Eric Mendoza for stepping forward this year and running. I'm glad to see you here tonight, Eric. I'm really happy... I'm really happy to see the interest that Eric showed in the community this year and stepping forward to run. I think that he voiced some good points that I'm going to have to pay attention to in the coming two years. I've already talked with Mr. Mendoza since the election and planned to work with him, and I've invited him to work with me through the coming two years as we move forward. One of the first things that we're planning is to hold a youth summit for Ward 4 youth in January to get a better understanding of what the young people in this neighborhood would like to see from the government. And I'm also working with the Church of God on Geneva Avenue, and I'm hopeful that I'll be able to work with them as they put together a gang forum in February. Just, again, appreciate the voters in Ward 4 and hope that we'll see an even larger turnout next year, or next election. And thank you.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the people who make it possible for me to do my job as mayor and to return as mayor. And first and foremost is my partner, Jeff Burkhart, who's here. And he manages to put up with my absence a good bit of the time. He not only puts up with it, he encourages me to go out and do the best job I can, and I know that he's always my support at home. And he makes it possible for me to do what I can to help this community be a better place, and I'd just like to say I really appreciate that. And I'd also like to recognize somebody who, I think, made this a much better election and who really got out there and talked to a lot of people and brought a real good perspective to this, and that's my opponent, Roger Schlegel, who's also here tonight. And I've found it very helpful to talk with Roger a good bit during the campaign. We kind of got to spend many nights in a row together at the same forums and talking about a lot of the same things and talking to the same people. But we talked to some very different people on the campaign, and we've had an opportunity since the campaign to get together and talk about some of the things that he heard from people, some of the things that I heard. There were some areas of commonality. There were some differences, and it's been very good to talk that over, and we intend to continue talking. And we've talked about ways in which he might get involved in some various areas of the community where he's got some interest, and I hope that he will find a way to fit into his schedule, a way to get involved in any number of things that I know that he's very interested in. And I think one of the things that was clear to me in this campaign was that it was incumbent upon this new council to find better ways to communicate with more residents and more segments of the community. When I was first elected two years ago, I talked about wanting to have some different venues, some different ways to have input from the community instead of just in a council meeting where there's an opportunity for, you know, three minutes of public comment or something like that. I've had office hours every week, but I know it can be hard for people to get to where I am on, kind of on my schedule, to talk to me. A number of people have taken that opportunity, but I think that we need to provide more opportunities. So, one of the things that Roger talked about during the campaign that I'm going to institute right away, that I thought was a great idea, was to have ward nights at the city council so that every month we'll have a different ward who has the first part of the meeting, where maybe people come at 7:00 o'clock and have an opportunity to talk with the council for half an hour before the meeting about whatever anybody wants to talk about, and then there'll be an opportunity in about the first half hour of the meeting to have people who, however they're chosen, or self-choose to represent some of the interests of particular problems, particular areas, particular groups in their ward, let the council know what they're thinking, and give us a little bit of a chance to interact with them. I think that one of the things that we also need to do in addition to having people come here, because that's another instance of kind of coming into this room or the other room when we move back over when it's finished, we also need to get out more to people in the community in different areas. So, I'd also like to kind of institute a, once a month, I tried to do that before. I wasn't successful in making it happen that often, so I want to try and institutionalize it and make it so that the council has an opportunity once a month to go somewhere else in the city, meet with people. There's a couple buildings that seem like an obvious choice for places to go. I think we need to get over to Ward 6 and go to the rec center or any other place over in Ward 6, talk with people who live there, talk with people over in Hillwood Manor, talk with the business owners. I see Erwin Mack here tonight and the Tacoma Langley Commercial Development Authority. We know that we have some dialogue, but I know that there are any number of times, I'm sure, when the CDA would like to be able to talk to all of the council rather than just the Ward 6 representative. And so, I think we need to avail ourselves of the opportunities to go out and reach out to people who may not feel as much a part of what we do. Sometimes I think we kind of hear some of the same voices over and over again, and we need to be able to hear a lot more voices, have a good dialogue with folks, and I think we'll get much better results from everything that we do, whether it's talking about the strategic plan, whether it's talking about the budget, which is linked with the strategic plan. And then finally, it should promote some partnerships with people who may not have the opportunity or the desire to sit on a city committee, but who have other things that they can bring to bear, and we can find out what those talents are and try and help them get involved and make our community a better place to live. So, I'm hoping that we can go forward in any number of new ways to try and get that partnership with all of the elements of this community. And I'd also like to try and maybe formalize something with neighborhood associations where all of the neighborhood association representatives can get together every so often and meet with me, meet with the council, and talk about what's going on, areas of commonality, so that we can kind of slice and dice this a couple of different ways and find the best way for everybody to get more involved and for us to all benefit from that involvement. So, I look forward to trying to make that happen in the next two years with all of your help, and I'm glad to see so many people here tonight, and welcome, and thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make this be my first opportunity as a city council member to say thank you to a lot of people. But first, I want to say that I am genuinely honored to have been elected to this office, and I am genuinely excited about the opportunity to take on this job. I never thought that I would say that about becoming a, I was going to say politician, but an elected representative. A lot of people say, "Oh, you're a politician," and I'm thinking, "I don't even know how to spell the word." But anyway, I do, actually. So, it makes me the freshman member of this council, and at my point in life, being a freshman is kind of a good feeling, because you're kind of, it's a feeling of starting something new, just like when you went off to high school, and you went off to college, and then you were a buck private in the army or something like that. So, I expect to have a big learning curve. I'm going to do a lot of listening before I start opening my trap and telling people what I think. I don't know how long that'll last, but we'll see. I want to say that having run a campaign over five weeks as vigorously as I knew how, and believe me, what I did was pretty much seat of the pants because I didn't have a campaign committee, or to the extent that I did, they weren't any smarter about it than I was, that I have found an extraordinary appreciation now for the people in our country and our state and our city who make the effort to run for office. It is a trial at, in one sense. It's very exciting. It gives you a huge exposure to people that you never thought you'd meet before, and then you get all done with that process, and then you have to wait. And I can tell you, November 3rd was one of the longest days of my life, waiting for those returns to come in. So, that just adds to my sense of honor and excitement, having gotten to this point. And I want to thank, to start with, all those people in Ward 6 who took the time to answer their door and speak with me. They didn't have to do that, but they, many of them were genuinely interested to meet me and were willing to share their candid comments, some supportive, some completely flustered as to who I was and why I would be standing in their doorway. And hopefully, I made a good impression on them. But mostly, what I did was listen, because I figured these folks in Ward 6, even though I've lived there over two decades, the great majority of them don't know me, and why should they vote for somebody they don't know? So, I figured it was my job to get out and say, "Here I am, and this is what I try to stand, what I'm trying to stand for." So, I want to thank all those people who did that and all the people who came to the polls and voted. Finally, I want to say thanks to several people. My next-door neighbor, three doors down, Mark, and I can't for the life of me remember Mark's last name because it's always so hard to pronounce, but he was the guy that first volunteered to nominate me. Roger Van Zee, who gave me some guidance on how to organize my campaign. Barry Lee Howard, who lives in our neighborhood and gave me lots of ideas and suggestions on how to run. I want to thank my opponent, who I don't think is here tonight, Naveed Nazir, a young man who lives in the Hillwood Manor Apartments. He's only lived in the community two years, and that did not deter him from throwing his hat in the ring. And he is a very dedicated and committed guy, and I told him on election night after the votes were counted that I genuinely wanted to get his input because he has ideas, particularly with regard to tenants. And already, I spent two hours meeting with him last week in my living room, hearing his ideas and sharing ideas with him. And I want to encourage him, and I hope there's more people like him in Ward 6 who want to get involved. And finally, I want to thank my family members and dear friends who gave me the moral support that I needed to keep my chin up through this whole thing. And last but not least, I want to say thank you to my wife, Nancy, who, even though she had doubts, like I did at the beginning, as to whether or not this is the right thing to do and how are we going to fit it in with our life as retirees, she really gave me tremendous amount of moral and loving support, and I thank her for that. So, that's all I want to say, and I'm excited to be here and looking forward to serving as a representative of Ward 6.
I think I'll start by thanking my wife, Sally, who's in the room, and my family, my two daughters, Hillary and Sarah, who were behind me all the way, and I very much appreciate all their love and support, but for them, I would certainly not be here. I'd also like to thank the folks who nominated me, Kaye Daniels Cohen, Robert Griffith, and Erin Cohen. I'd like to thank every neighborhood association in my ward, Pinecrest, BF Gilbert, Wacko, Circle Woods, SS Carroll, Boyd Carroll, Sycamore Avenue, the folks around Spring Park, the folks around Opal Daniels Park, folks around Forest Park, the folks just across the border in the District of Columbia. I can't really thank them, but they're over there just on the, on one edge, and there are folks in Prince George's County on another edge of our ward, which is a funny dog bone. I call it a dog bone-shaped ward because it has a kind of a big part at the bottom and a big part at the top, and a narrow waist at Tacoma Junction. And Tacoma Junction is part of the Carroll Avenue And Tacoma Junction is part of the Carroll Avenue corridor, a commercial corridor, one of the, two of the main major corridors of commerce in our city, another one being New Hampshire Avenue, and that also abuts Ward 3. So I have the pleasure of serving businesses along both, in both of those areas. I also have the great pleasure in providing constituent service to many people in my ward and that is something that I take very seriously and that I get a great deal of pleasure from and that I encourage everyone to keep me at that, keep me at my post and ask me things and put me to work, because that's part of why I'm here, it's a large part of why I'm here. And finally, along with my colleague Josh, along the Carroll Avenue corridor, we have our work cut out for us this next two years. And I look forward to finding ways to stimulate and improve the Carroll Avenue corridor, which includes both my chunk at Tacoma Junction and the old town chunk farther on, going all the way into the district there in the, in the, in the Main Street corridor. And I think that the one thing that will be a real challenge for us, but I know that we can rise to, a challenge we can rise to, is to retain and build the wealth of our community, starting now. We have been doing that, we are a very wealthy community in culture and in resources and in people, but we have to keep that message in the forefront of our mind and build that wealth, whatever it takes, because it is going to be a tough next couple of years. And I just want us all to pay attention to that and do what we can to make that a reality. So, thank you.
Okay, the final order of business is a special session item and it's a resolution recognizing the contributions of Donna Victoria as Ward 6 city council member. Is there a second for the resolution?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Sniffer, signed by Councilmember Robinson. Are there any council comments? I'd like to say, Donna, if you'd like to come up front. Yes, yes. I'm going to get the right one here. Oh, you can just... Yeah, okay, that's good, that's good for the moment. First, I think I'll read the resolution. Whereas Ward 6 council member Doug Barry resigned from the city council and left office on May 27th, 2009 to relocate closer to his work. And whereas the city council appointed Donna Victoria as the representative for Ward 6 on June 22nd, and she took office on July 6th. And whereas, upon her appointment to the city council, council member Victoria displayed an impressive breadth of knowledge about the various issues before the city council and actively engaged in discussions of policy matters with her council colleagues. And whereas during her tenure, the city council addressed the draft Tacoma Langley Sector Plan and provided comments to the Montgomery County Planning Board regarding the sector plan. And whereas council member Victoria worked diligently to make sure that property owners within the boundaries of the sector plan area had a voice relative to the future development of the crossroads and effectively conveyed their thoughts and comments to the other members of the city council. And whereas council member Victoria testified on behalf of the city on the subject of the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan on several occasions and worked directly with the Montgomery County Planning Board in the resolution of several contentious topics. And whereas council member Victoria approached her legislative duties in a pragmatic manner with a touch of humor that was appreciated by all. And whereas council member Victoria did not seek election in the fall of 2009 and left office today, now therefore, be resolved with the council, the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland hereby recognizes the contributions that council member Donna Victoria made to the City of Tacoma Park during her tenure on the Tacoma Park City Council. And that's that, there was a lot of language in there about working on the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan and I truly appreciate many of the things that you did as you stepped into this temporary role that you took on, but your work on the sector plan was just outstanding. Donna and I went to any number of planning board meetings, both informal sessions with planning board staff and formal sessions of the planning board where both Donna and I sat up on the dais with the planning board going through point by point on the sector plan as the planning board went through their work sessions to get the language right, to make it right. And you just had all kinds of good input into that in very particular, you know, great broad policy points that needed to be reinforced, but also the particulars, the minutia of what was going to work for the neighborhood, in particular, some of the houses that were going to be, that do now and will continue to butt up against some of the commercial area and to make sure that the details of that sector plan are right as we move forward over the next 10 to 20 years to see implementation of that plan. And your ability to be available to do that, to go to those planning board meetings, to sit there and sometimes kind of go toe to toe with some of the people there was really valuable and just wanted to let you know how much everybody really appreciates that. I know the neighborhood appreciates it. And I appreciate it, the council appreciates it. And we really valued your time here and I hope you enjoyed it as much as we enjoyed your presence here.
Well, I have a few letters from constituents to beg to differ with you, but I totally thank you and it was, it was worth while. And then what I said, I think everybody comes here with the intent to run this thing and I feel a lot better about leaving you in charge now.
And with that, we're charred.